All right, the common council meeting for September the 25th is now in order, comes to order, and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Councilwoman Miller, would you lead us?
Sure.
Pledge of allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you. Okay. The council meeting minutes for August the 28th, did everybody have a chance to look at those? Are there any corrections or additions?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Goodman. Is there a second by Fitzwater? Those in favor, signify by raising your right hand, and it's unanimous? Okay. Raise these left hand, but we'll take that in again. Okay, Board of Public Works and Safety minutes for August the 2nd, the 16th, and the 30th were for information only. We don't have anything under communications, so we'll go right on down to the public hearing. I will open the public hearing referencing condemnation of property located at 1430 Monroe Street, and I would ask Casey to step up. Hello, good evening. Could you identify yourself for the record, please?
My name is Casey Coles, and I am the Executive Director of the Fulton County Plant Commission, enforcing the city's unsafe building ordinance. And you wanted to start with 1430 Monroe?
Yes.
Correct. 1430 Monroe, we actually have originally dealt with this house back in 2014. It burnt. There was a fire, and we sent out just a simple scrap and debris violation letter and requested that the owner clean it up. It went from there to an unsafe order for the original owner. In the meantime, it switched owners, so we had to amend the order to the new owner. And that occurred in October 27, 2015. We actually had another condemnation of the unsafe hearing on the unsafe order, and the new owner was actually there. And so the council at that time allowed him, he wanted to refab the house. So the council allowed him at that time to get a permit and to go ahead and remodel the home, which he did. He came in the next day. He did receive the remodel permit. Some of the preliminary work was completed. The most important thing on these is normally to get it buttoned up, replace the windows, replace the doors, make sure that it's buttoned up and sealed from the weather. So they got the windows in at the door and started replacing the roof, and then they stopped. And at this point, the pictures that you received that I gave to you in front, that are in front of you, those would be current photos. And honestly, we did notify the owner again with a 10-day notice, which is typical. That's our standard procedure. We give them a 10-day notice, ask them to tell us what their intent is. We never received that notice back, and we never received any comments from the owner. So then we sent-
Excuse me, Casey, just one question. When you send out a notice like that, is it certified, signature, receipt, returned?
The 10-day is just first class, but then when we don't receive any notice, we send out the actual order certified. We require a signature, which you'll see that in your packet. The whole envelope was returned to us.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it wasn't signed for?
No.
What are the chances these people aren't even around anymore?
It's a good possibility. Now, we never received the first-class one back. Typically, we'll find that returned if, in this case, it's a P.O. box, if the P.O. box has been assigned to someone else, you know, they moved. But we never received it back. So it's a good possibility he is not around. In this particular case, I know that my inspectors, when they went in to do the inspections, they said there was still a very strong odor of the creosol from the fire, and they had gutted it and had started to replace lumber, but they just said that it was unbelievable, the smell of the fire that was in the house that ripped through it. You can see from the photos that I gave you, I mean, the roof, however it was repaired, you can see that there's a corner that is already open to the elements. We have a soffit that's open to the elements. We have shingles that are pulling off. The electrical service, even though they did receive the permit and went in and conducted some rewiring work, the meter was never placed back on the home. If it was, it was taken off because the meter is no longer there. So it has not had electricity for quite some time, and has been abandoned, as far as I know, since then. They've never finished it. So at this point, our hands are kind of tied. I really don't have any other recourse but to ask for an unsafe affirmation on it, as an abandoned home, you know, that's not being corrected.
I was not here for the 2015 meeting. Some of you were. John, do you remember the posture at that time?
Yeah, we did grant them some time to work on the home and to get it proper. It was like six months at a time, and then they would come back to the council and say how much progress is going on. And there was, some was done, and then it was the disappearing act again. And I know that that was it, and I can see that the building is as bad as it was in '15 for sure.
I don't know if any of you have seen it firsthand. I looked at, we had a project over on Monroe Street, and it is, they put some money into it, but it's bad. And then it is in very, very close proximity to two neighbors that are probably having fits. I'm surprised you haven't heard from them.
I am too. I just happened to see it because of the sidewalk project, coincidentally.
What is our next step, Casey, as far as to get control possession, what we can do with the home as far as to make it either go away or?
The way the process works is if the council affirms the order, the unsafe order, then the city attorney takes it to a judge. And I believe that typically they try their own notification of the owner, send out some notice to them through that court proceedings. But then, you know, Andy would take it to the judge and ask for his signature, his blessing on the order. And then normally what I do is I send out a notice to, I have a list of five or six contractors, ask them for estimates, and then I go ahead and I ask them to take it down. And I have a list of requirements I make them follow as far as responsible demolition. But then it would be a lien. Shot of them, we'd put a lien on the property so that when the lot was sold, the lien would be paid back to the city. But as far as the city receiving the property in their name, that's not part of this process. Property stays in this current owner's name. It's just an unsafe order that a lien is put on there for the work and for the attorney fees.
It's dealing with a safe structure.
Unsafe structure.
Yeah. Any questions from the side of the dais? Comments? If not, I'd open it up to the public, comments or questions in public hearing relative to the property?
Have they just paid the property tax on?
You know, I didn't check.
2015, but definitely in the rear by now.
Well, just because they abandoned the house doesn't mean they didn't pay the taxes on it. But I didn't check, to be honest with you. And I can, normally, I'll check that before Andy takes it through.
Any other questions from the public? Okay. Then I will close. Any questions?
Should we make a motion to proceed?
Well, we have to close the public hearing first.
Either way.
I think you could vote during the public hearing.
Okay. Comments and suggestions from the council?
I just suggest that the Fulton County Planning and Building Inspector move forward.
Okay, it's been mentioned that moved to move forward to the condemnation process. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Moved by Miller and seconded by Garrett. We move forward. Those in favor signify by raising your right hand. It's unanimous. Okay. Instead of closing the public hearing, I'll just move on to the next item for public hearing. Keep it open and talk about the condemnation of property located at 730 Indiana Avenue.
This particular property at 730 Indiana Avenue also experienced a fire. It was a pole barn structure full of personal items, cold storage, and there was no electricity to the building. The building burnt, and I believe we're probably going into 90 or 120 days. Again, the process, the procedure for the office is we typically give an owner, you know, at least 30 days, 60 days, to try to get everything wrapped up with their insurance company, if there is insurance. In this particular case, there was not. We send another 10-day notice on August 9th, which I believe was, I think that was already three months after the fire. It was quite a while. We gave the owner quite a bit of time to get a contractor in, to pull the metal out, because that's basically all that's left, is just metal and a few debris items. But the owner did call us, say that she had contacted somebody to mow the grass and to remove the metal. And so we asked her how long, and I believe we gave her another month after that. And when nothing proceeded on August 28th, so we created the actual order that said it's an unsafe order, but it also, it goes to the fact that it's an impaired structural. There's several, some beams that are standing. It was a hazard to public health, public nuisance, and it's a danger if anyone goes on there. There's quite a bit of, like I said, metal and debris still there. So we just asked for the trash to be removed and to remove that part of the unsafe building still standing, which is just two or three poles. In this case, I know that the mayor's office was contacted a couple times, I believe, by the owner. My office was contacted a couple times, and the owner kept saying that she was looking for someone to remove the metal and to mow it. And last week, the clerk's, the clerk treasurer's office received a phone call from the owner, message to tell my office that there was somebody who was going to mow it and remove the metal that day. This was Friday. They called Chris.
I was going to say, probably called my office.
And I went by this morning, and it had been mowed, the outskirts, but the metal was still there. So, and of course, the hearing was already set, which I did tell the owner that the last time I spoke to her, you know, it's set. And if you have everything cleaned up, I'll be happy to walk into the council and tell them everything's taken care of and no issues.
Yeah, I too went and took a look today because there has been some activity. Doesn't look like any large activity. It's still got a lot of the stuff, the unsafe-looking stuff. Anybody else had an opportunity to take a look at it?
I think by seven. Proceed forward.
Anybody on this side?
Do you feel like there's been, when you feel like she's actually trying? I mean, I've had to deal with, you know, trying to get contractors in the last few months here and in Indy, and I know it's hard, you know, people working.
I had two people call my office and ask who owned it because they want to go get the metal. And I believe the mayor also had spoke to-
One contact.
Did those people go get the metal?
Nobody's gotten any metal that I know of. I believe the metals-
Can't do that permission.
And she has somebody because didn't they come to the police station and say, let us, let us know at the police department?
She called the police department just to let us know if somebody was supposed to be there removing the metal and mowing, but-
Was that last week?
Yeah.
Last?
May I?
I walked by there at lunchtime.
Greg Living, Rochester Metal Products. They were, people were there moving, removing metal Friday when I walked by at lunchtime.
Okay.
Not a lot. I mean, they were taking it out piece by piece and putting it on the trailer. Just to, I mean, they, you can't tell it now, but physically see somebody and figure.
Well, great. So there has been small progress.
Is that enough progress to keep the issue open for 30 days?
I'd say that's up to you. If you want to take it up for 30 days, I'll be happy to come back and tell you. I mean, if there is somebody, my fear is typically in this situation, what happens is they go in to get the metal and anything valuable, but all the debris stays.
It's going to be there.
But between now and then, is that going to hurt anything? You know, hopefully no one goes on and leaves it opposed, but.
Any thoughts?
You know, it's going to be snowing pretty soon, and it's still going to be, the metal will be removed, the debris will still be standing, the rubbish will still be there. Health and safety should be first concern, I would suggest, moving forward.
Is anyone here representing property on 730 Indiana Avenue? Anyone present? No. Any other comments? Thank you, Greg, for your comment. Any other comments from the public?
I will just say we've been trying to buy the property. The owner hasn't returned my calls. Someone in my organization has spoken with her, but we're not going to be very far with that person.
Could the order be to, if it's not cleaned up within 30 days, then the city do it?
Well, it will take a while. I mean, it's not, I can't call contractor, I mean, that's a good point. I can't call contractors tomorrow. You know, it takes, you know, your legal counsel a while to get the paperwork around and get it in court. So realistically, you'd be looking at a 30-day timeline.
If you were to affirm this tonight, we come back at the October meeting. It's about a 50/50 chance I have the title search back yet and have filed a complaint. And even if I file the complaint, you know, we're still in the service process, so there's zero chance that I already have a judgment against her by the time we come to the October meeting. So there is some built-in time there. And occasionally, we'll have someone who only responds to litigation, and they address it, and we dismiss the litigation. So there is some slack in there for it.
And this isn't a tear-down. It's a clean-up. So, or getting in and tearing down, you're not looking at a building that's coming down. You're looking-
Yeah, it's pretty much skipping up and dumping in a truck.
Yeah. Yeah. So if the owner does want to come forward before we had any expense in it, that could be turned around. Even with action taken tonight, you're saying there will be talk.
Before you, yeah, there will be a little bit, because I thought we were at the title search, but there won't, there won't be a great deal between now and-
That would be enough to get it done.
Right. I think, yeah, him saying that there's been some observation of some type of work there, I think that gives him the opportunity to carry through with it.
So we can still carry on, and they still will have to tell the next meeting if they have things done. So then I'm making the form of a motion just to carry, just to keep things moving here. I'm making the form of a motion if we proceed.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Garrett to move forward with the condemnation and seconded by Councilman Goodman. Those in favor. And it is unanimous.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Goodness.
Okay, well, I am going to close the public hearings for the condemnation issues and open another public hearing for the MSRP grant application. And introduce Stephen Ray.
Okay, I did it. I mean, I'm automatically going to do anything, except I don't have a hundred percent.
Or Harry, which one should I introduce?
We're going to get tagged.
Introduce Stephen Ray and Harry Webb.
This is just a, yeah, this is off of web's table.
Did you get this off the web?
Yeah.
Bad one. Really bad.
That's my one. Okay. Stephen, would you identify yourself for the record, please?
Good evening. I'm Stephen Ray. I'm the Executive Director of the North Central Indiana Regional Planning Council. We're serving as the Grand Administrator for the City of Rochester's Downtown Main Street Revitalization Grant. Tonight's public hearing is a requirement of the Community Development Block Grant Program. We have to hold two public hearings, one prior to the proposal and one prior to the actual application submission. The Community Development Block Grant Program is a federal program. It's HUD dollars that come back to the state. The Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs administers those dollars in a variety of programs, the Main Street Revitalization being one of them. In order to be eligible for the program, we need a unit of local government, city, county, or town, incorporated town, to serve as the lead applicant. And the city has been gracious enough to serve in that capacity. We also need the community to have a designated Main Street organization, and Rochester's Downtown Partnership serves in that role. The national objective for the project is the prevention or elimination of slum and blight. The city is seeking $600,000 to do facade improvements within the designated downtown district. OCRA sets aside approximately $2 million each year for Main Street Revitalization projects. They can fund two to three, maybe four, projects a year with $2 million. The amount of Community Development Block Grant funds that will benefit low to moderate income individuals within the community is estimated to be $266,640. The final budget is yet to be determined. Local match is coming from some city resources. Harry, Community Foundation? Community Foundation?
Yeah, Community Foundation.
And the building owners. Those dollar amounts will be determined by the time of the final application. There'll be no displacement with this project. The proposals are due next Friday, October 5th. The application, final application, is due November 30th, and the award announcement, it will be sometime in mid-January 2019. Those are my talking points. At this point, I think we'll turn it over to Harry and let him take you through the project a little bit.
Yeah, there is a timeline that Stephen has been working off of, and we're basically about fourth of the way into it through the process. The environmental review, is this Friday?
We hope to, we hope to have the environmental reviews submitted this Friday, yes.
What you have, what I printed out for you, there's, I think, 17, 18 different buildings involved in this initial phase. These are not, this is, this is what is going to be turned in for environmental review. Some of these projects, some of these buildings will not be, be part of the project at this point. We don't know yet. These were the ones who initially paid us the $500, and we got the architect involved to do preliminary drawing of the project. We have, this spreadsheet kind of goes through some of the dollars. The $600,000 is what we're applying for from OCPRA. The city has paid in the $20,000, which we basically have used for the architect to do this preliminary work in the, in the application that she's getting ready to submit in for review on Friday. The theater and foundation has put, or the foundation has put in a match, was it 20?
Twenty.
$20,000 is the amount that the Community Foundation has kicked towards the project. Redevelopment Commission roughly about a year ago pledged $15,000, and other is still to be determined. We would like to be able to raise some funds. So the total project funds coming in are $655,000. Of that, the fixed costs are, we have committed $120,000 to go back to the theater. The architect fees for doing the second phase of the project is $90,000, and the Grand Administrator, Stephen, his fees are $48,000. And there's also a labor standard and environmental review of $8,000. So our fixed costs coming out of this is $266, which leaves us $389,000 for local match, or match from the fund to help building owners improve their buildings. We haven't finalized how that match is going to be distributed, but at this point, we're-
So I'm stopping. Sorry, Harry, what was your soft cost figure then? Two what?
$266. And I'd be happy to email you this. This is a working document. It changes literally every time we have a conversation because projects are scaled differently. And we've created a formula for the building owners that pays 80% of their costs for the first $25,000. So if they did a $25,000 improvement, the grant would provide $20,000, and they would pay five. For the next $25,000, they pay 50/50. And so that takes the match of 38/5 on a project that costs $50,000. Anything over $50,000, we do not have funds to help, so it'd be all on the building owner. So the matching percentage is kind of varied. This column shows our project cost estimates that we have right now. She still has eight, and this is, these are estimates been prepared by the architect. Some of these projects have been, have been reviewed with the building owners, and projects have been scaled back. There are still seven to eight properties that have not had that review with the architect. So the numbers are on this page are per total cost estimates, and those may be scaled back, or projects could possibly be eliminated. But the total project improvements to downtown will be, if, if everything on this page is done, is $1.2 million.
So, Harry, if I'm doing my building, and it's a $400,000 project, can I piece out part of it that's $50,000 being the grant program?
Yeah, if you wanted to just do windows, for instance-
As part of the grant?
Uh-huh. You could do just windows and decide to do the rest on your own, or even do another historic preservation grant. So, yeah, it doesn't have to be, if the project comes out, you know, there's, you know, there's projects on here that are, let's say, $98, $92,000, or, well, there's a- For instance, the third one down on here is the brewery site, and, which is Chris Van Dyne's property, and it's estimated to be $62,000 project. The maximum owner contributed funds was basically obtained in a survey when we, when we first asked them how much they could put towards a project. But using that and these columns here, the owner, to do this $62,000, the owner would have to put in $29,500, and they would get $32,500 match. And that's kind of how, and so in his situation, he's about 52% of his project is grant dollars.
Got you.
And you can see these grant dollars kind of vary based on, obviously, the more expensive projects can be 20%, match, 25% match, so forth. There's a couple options that could be happen on these real expensive projects. They could either carve out and go after historic preservation money, the same grant that I used to do the drugstore. That program pays up to $100,000 to a building owner on a 25% match. So they can get a $400,000- So they can get a $400,000 project to get $100,000. And so, because our grants are, our grant is going to be limited, at least at this phase, unless a lot of projects fall out, the 32,000, they may decide, you know, I think I'd be better off going after this other grant. They could actually do both.
As well.
The Historic Preservation Grant can do roofs and other things that the, this facade enhancement grant cannot do. This facade grant is simply...
Would Ms. Jacobs be working with them if they wanted historical preservation grant?
She could, yeah.
Okay, but they'd have to contract hers separate from...
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, she was the architect I used for the project, for the drugstore. And she's already done a lot of preliminary work, so she'd have a, you know, pretty good idea of...
A leg up.
A leg up on that building. So if anybody wants me to email them larger, I mean, this document that's been printed out, this basically shows before and after descriptions. It's kind of hard to read when you scale a blueprint down to a nine-and-a-half by eleven sheet of paper. But most of the projects involved, these all have to be historic treatments. So it has to be taking it back to the way the building was originally designed, kind of thing. But it's basically a lot of window replacement, a lot of storefront glass replacement, some new doors, some tuck pointing, brick areas and that type of thing. Repairing the corsets up across the top of the buildings and painting those and that type of project. Some of the building owners are in here today and they maybe can address more about what their specific project is going to be. There's also two documents that the city will prepare. We have draft copies here that I can give the attorney with your blessing. And one of these is an easement. These are documents the building owner will have to sign in order to be part of the project. One of them is basically a ten-foot easement that basically stipulates that they can't remove these materials after we put them on, the grant dollars. So it's a, is it five years?
Yeah.
Five years.
It's a limited term of easement.
Five years. There's nothing that prohibits a building owner from selling the property after doing this grant. But the easement is transferable.
Yeah.
And then there's also just kind of a general memorandum of understanding of all the phases here. And it has...
Is there any reporting necessary during this five-year period?
Reporting on the building?
To make notification that nothing has been changed, verification?
Of the grant itself, yes, there is. So I, the Grand Administrator, will drive by, provide semi-annual updates to the Office of Community and Rural Affairs. They will do a desk review and then occasionally they'll come out and do a spot check to ensure that the buildings are still serving the same purpose that they funded.
And then that goes away after the five-year period?
Yes.
I'll briefly read this letter of understanding in the draft form. "As a building owner participating in Rochester MSRP Improvement Grant Project, I understand that my participation requires the following. I provide the City of Rochester an easement for participation in the building for a period of five years as easement has been recorded in the office, the full kind of quarter. All building facade improvements will be completed in accordance with Secretary of Tier Standards for Rehabilitation of Historic Buildings. All rehabilitation plans have been approved by the Indiana Department of Natural Resources, State Historic Preservation Office. This is the City of Rochester grant-funded project. I must not negotiate directly with a contractor. Instead, all negotiations regarding my building must be made through..." Blank, I assume that's the contractor's name?
Yes.
"The scope of work for my building is defined in a bid document dated blank. Federal requirements prohibit the addition or deletion of items unless approved by the project architect, NCIRPC, the City of Rochester, and the owner. If I elect to add or delete an item or items not identified in the bid document, this work must be done following the conclusion of the project or change of procedure. In such case, 100% of the cost will be paid by me or refunded to me. I understand that if collective project funds exist after the conclusion of the project, I may be entitled to appropriated reimbursement. I will participate financially in the rehabilitation work for my building and provide at least 20% of the opinion of probable cost." Our situation is going to be at least 25%. "I will deposit 100% of this amount into the city, into an account set up by the City of Rochester for this project by the deadline of 4:00 p.m. on blank, and that will be sometime in November."
That's yet to be determined, but late October, very early November?
"If I fail to meet this deadline, my building will be eliminated from the project. The contingency fund at blank will be used as needed by the number of participating building owners. There is no required match. We have told every one of the building owners to set aside some additional funds. If a contingency fund is depleted, I will be responsible for 100% of the cost of any overages approved by the owner related directly to the scope of work as presented in the bid document. Any work not authorized out of the scope of work will be at no cost to the owner. I will deposit the amount of any overage in the city account within 14 days of being advised of additional cost. Upon the completion of this project, I will be permitted to..." "And I will be financially responsible for any maintenance, replacement, repair work subsequent to the completion or the rehabilitation in order to maintain the appearance of my building, not covered under the defective workmanship or warranty work." And then basically a place for signature.
It's going to be the city's account?
The money will...
I understood you said it's the city's account.
Yes, the city is paying for this project, but they're using grant dollars and building owner dollars to do so.
I'll have to have an escrow account set up.
One contractor will be doing all the work.
That's, the other question I was going to, because of your first blank you hit there. Who is this one contractor? Does anybody know right now since?
Oh, no.
Nobody knows, is it a general?
We haven't bid it yet, you know, so, once we determine that we're at this estimating phase and trying to figure out the scope that everybody wants to be in and the comfort level, how much work they want done, if they're in or out. Once they say, once they say they're in, we'll know exactly what match we can calculate and we'll determine how much they're going to have to put in escrow account. And that'll all happen before the application happens. Then we go and apply. If OCPRA comes back and grants the money, then we hire the architect to come back and take these documents to construction documents. And that's when the work begins of preparing, preparing this whole project to a build phase. Then that will be bid by many contractors, hopefully. And we'll select a final contractor to do the work.
1.2 million dollar project, it'll be a significant bid package, for sure.
Yeah. That number will probably go down, but at this point, it's 1.2. Any other questions or comments from you?
Any comments from the council? I'd open it up to the public, any comments or questions?
Who would pick the contractor?
Your, your... Your name, please?
Tina Rowe.
The city does, don't they? Isn't that...
Yes.
That's our part of the project management?
Yes.
We have to manage the project.
Well, but isn't there a matrix in order, when we get the bid documents and review them, isn't there some kind of a matrix for measurements of, like a scoring system?
Right, right. This is just like any other public improvement project. The city will be responsible for placing the bids, receiving them at a stated date and time, and then going through the scrolling process.
Bid openings, board of works, you know, all that, like doing a normal project.
Typically, your architect or your engineer will be there to provide you with support as well. Yes, sir. Your name?
Dwight Gunter. If you've got ten buildings to be redone, are they going to start with one building, finish it completely? Because that would be a little difficult to have ten buildings all four up at the same time.
That's a really good question. That'll be a conversation for Pat and the contractors. I can't, can't respond to that.
Well, that's a great question. So you've got ten buildings, yeah, who's going to be first? How's it going to proceed?
I would have to say they'll be doing multiple projects at the same time. You know, they'll be using different subs to come in and demo, other subs that, you know, when the masons come in, they're going to be going from one building to the next. But they're going to be, you know, when they're doing windows, that window contractor is going to be going right down the street doing each building.
Well, Pat's had experience with this. I would think she'd be able to answer the question, is that part of the bid package? Do they have to lay out some kind of matrix, how they would proceed in accomplishing that many tasks? I would think that's in the bid package, I'd be my guess. But that's a good question for her, since she's been through it.
Yeah. Certainly a Pat question.
Good question. Good question. Anybody, anything else? Yes, Wes?
Harry, how many, how many projects do you say that people bought or now? And then how, where do you think that would be by the time the application is submitted?
I think we're, I'd have to do an actual count, but I think we're around seventeen. But we have still eight building owners that we haven't talked with. When we, so with the other eleven, nine, no, ten of them, we're very favorable of moving forward. So we kept thinking during that day, when that, when the day started out, I was hoping we'd have five. And by the time the day was done, we had, everybody we talked to seemed to be willing to move forward. But there were seven to eight property owners that was not available to go through the review. So we haven't had anybody fall out yet. But they, there are several that have not completely reviewed it either.
Right along with the question Dwight asked, it made me think of something else. Is there a time limit that the construction has to be completed by?
Eighteen months.
To fulfill the grant?
Eighteen months.
Eighteen months.
From grant award to completion.
Are there any other questions, anybody? Yes, Dwight?
The, when I was talking to the architect, Pat, she made it very clear that the structure of the building, like the roof, did not have any links in it, that kind of thing. And I know three buildings that we're talking about that all have leaking roofs. Such as the Bailey Building, still doesn't have the roof done. And if they're in that application project, in the whole scope of things, at what point do they have to have their roof repaired before they can be in this whole project?
I think she was saying that would have to be completed before they could apply for this. So they better be doing it.
Any other questions? There really isn't any activity that the council has for this, other than to have the public meeting that up for questions. Nothing to vote on, we've already voted on being the champion for the program.
I have some signatures on some documents that I need. So if you want to close and then go over the documents, that would be fine.
I have yet, I would love to see something as our, as part of our process and development as our scope of responsibility. Like these issues that come up, is it the city that then becomes the negotiator to make sure these issues get ironed out? Are we, do we become OCPRA? Is that how, how it would work?
Your Grand Administrator and your architect will walk the city through any issues, work with you to resolve any issues that you may have that may come up during the implementation process. Ultimately, the city's responsible for the appropriate implementation of the grant and successful implementation. That's why you have a certified Grand Administrator, me or whomever. And the architect will ensure that, that the construction portion of the projects are successful as well.
Okay.
But certainly, yeah, I can, I can get you the bullet points, talking points, and then we can sit and have a conversation, answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions from the legal side, Andy?
I don't.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to close the public meeting? Anybody want to move to do that?
Yeah.
Those in favor, unanimous, the public meeting is now closed. Thank you. Okay.
Documents, man? Would you like them now, or should I take a seat and come back later?
Oh, I just...
I was going to say, one of them, you might want to explain the one about the application.
Authorization?
Yes.
Okay.
Because that would make it look like council people.
So these documents are required for the proposal submission. That is authorizing the submission of the proposal. The proposal is a placeholder application. It gets our foot in the door and allows us to submit the final application in November. If we fail to meet the requirements at the proposal stage, we're dead in the water come November.
See that Shana gets copies, of course, right?
Yes. That is informing SHPO that Jennifer Santos in my office will be submitting the environmental review on your behalf, and SHPO can discuss issues with Jennifer. Should anything...
What problems come back with the environmental review?
If you fail to meet the historic requirements, they will tell you we can do plastic windows or window treatments, those types of things. Basically, what we do is we submit the packet that, that packet right there, along with some additional information to SHPO and six other agencies. Let them know what type of work we're doing and what we hope to accomplish. And they sign off on it. That's proving need to transfer to public hearing then. And the final document, thank you for being patient with me, is a four-factor analysis of the language access plan. If you had a percentage of population, for argument's sakes, that was Hispanic, we would need to put together an access plan to ensure that they have access to the information and that English has a second language, as in Rochester does have a significant population with, yeah, with English as a second.
You just gave up your house, too.
Appreciate your time. Appreciate your time.
Yep.
Very much.
Okay. Thank you, Harry. Moving along to new business, trick-or-treat hours. Recommendation by the Board of Public Works and Safety is that we're gonna have trick-or-treating on Halloween, October thirty-first, and Rick, the Board of Works, is recommending the same hours as last year, five-thirty to seven-thirty.
That's what it's been for as long as I can remember.
That's Halloween, isn't it?
We need a motion to-
Would you like to extend that to midnight?
Sure. That'd be fine with me.
I have a motion-
I'll have a motion to-
Second. Okay. It's moved by Councilman Garrett, seconded by Goodman. Those in favor signify, and it's unanimous, same as last year. Okay. And we have Mr. Dwight Gunner this evening. Dwight, do you want to step up? And Dwight, I need to apologize to you. You, the Board of Works really wasn't the place for, for your meeting. The process, Casey's gone in chief. Okay, okay. Process is our ordinance for the historical corridor, if you all remember, states that Casey is the, is the office that everything's funneled through involving the corridor. But if there's something she believes needs some other scrutiny or approval, it would come to this body for the ordinance set up, like the fellow that had the garage downtown and then also the Bailey Building office. So that puts you on the docket, Dwight.
Okay. As y'all know, I own the dugout. And what I would like to do is be able to change the building to ADA accessible. And basically, the easiest and most beneficial way for all parties to be included would be to change the facade entry to the north side and put a elevated ramp from the south going north to that north door. I need to rise eight inches elevation because the sidewalk and the inside floor, the inside floor is eight inches higher than right up the sidewalk. So it eliminates the step. That way, it makes it easy for anybody that comes into town, wants to go to a bar, they can park out front, have a space for handicap, and they can come right in the front door. So that's basically it in a nutshell.
And his drawings were in your packet? In your email, yes.
Another motion.
I can go run copies if you like.
I'll do it. Thank you.
Before we do that, buddy, we'll let you all go. Casey, do you know if, is there anything historical in the building that would, if the ramp would be there, covering up that step or anything?
No, I mean Dwight's gonna refinish the facade, and honestly, I apologize, Dwight. I didn't even think about it. We were talking about as far as the historical corridor. I was just thinking about the fact that the city owned the right of way, which is why I referred him to the Board of Works. And, but he's actually restoring the out, the facade of the building back to historical nature. And that's part of the plan. So, I mean, yeah, the ramp is not historical, but it's a necessity. So I don't, I obviously don't receive the raise job. I don't know about the grant process, but as far as the availability for the public to use it, I think it's a great thing.
And the ramp is included in the project that will be reviewed by the historic people. It's going down there Friday. You know, the ramp is part of the project, so.
So what does that do, Harry?
They're just gonna, I mean, they'll be reviewing the whole thing. So if they had a problem with it, I guess they would tell us. I don't think it's gonna happen if they've been all.
They would have a lot of problems if they pointed a finger in that direction. Have something, a problem with ADA, except making a building ADA accessible down.
Right.
They would have a tremendous amount of problems.
They might have, it's like we talked at the Board of Works, and the reason that it should come here is not the ADA issue, the design, modernistic, or should it look like it conforms to the historical building or what?
I'm pretty flexible.
You're pretty flexible. You can do about anything, yeah.
I would just put that in the owner's hands, and I'm sure that Dwight and his capabilities will be just fine in handling it in the proper method.
I'd entertain a-
So the pictures look good?
Oh, yes, yeah.
And a movement by Goodman to accept your design proposal. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Miller. Those in favor? Seven-zero. Go for it.
Thank you.
Five-zero.
All right, sorry, five-zero. Be sure and tell them down there that we've approved it. Budget ordinance, does everybody have a copy? Do you have a copy? Copy that ordinance. Councilman Goodman.
Sure I do, Brian.
The one time I don't print everything, you don't have it in your book.
I know. Any other time, we've got to do. This is my signature sheet, so.
I'll go and try to increase my current footprint, so I have to save some trees today.
See, and I miss all, I hope.
Okay, I would entertain a motion for the reading of ordinance zero-five dash twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen budget ordinance. Motion for the first reading.
By title only, so moved.
Oh, second.
Well, that's, that's pretty slick. There's a motion to read ordinance five dash twenty-eighteen by title only by Goodman, seconded by Garrett. Those in favor? Okay, five-zero.
Ordinance resolution for appropriations and tax rates, ordinance number zero-five dash twenty-eighteen.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, I'd entertain a motion with the second reading of ordinance five dash twenty-eighteen by title only.
So moved. Second.
Okay, moved by Mason, seconded by Brian. Those in favor? Five-zero. You're on, sir?
Ordinance resolution for appropriations and tax rates, ordinance number zero-five dash twenty-eighteen.
Any, any discussions? Then I would ask to suspend the rules and have the third reading of ordinance zero-five dash twenty-eighteen by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor, it's five-zero. Okay, sir?
Ordinance resolution for appropriations and tax rates, ordinance number zero-five dash twenty-eighteen.
Okay, any discussion? Ask for a motion to accept ordinance five dash twenty-eighteen.
So moved. Second.
That's motion made by Heidi, seconded by Goodman. Those in favor, and that is?
Sorry?
No, that's okay. That's five-zero. Five dash twenty-eighteen passes.
Shaw, does this look okay? Do you want us to sign?
Yes, please, sign that one.
Okay, moving right along, then we'll go down to department heads' reports. Chief Butler is out of town. I don't see anybody from the fire department. Okay. Chief Schatz? This is a red-letter day. We will tell Chief Butler that you got to go first.
That's right. Good evening. For the month of August, we had a total of twenty-three accidents. Two of those were personal injury. We issued a total of sixty-five warnings. Sixty-one were for traffic and four were for city ordinances. There were a total of one hundred and fifteen offenses, with forty-six being traffic. Sixty-three criminal, three juvenile, and three city ordinances. Seventy-one total case reports, eight hundred and forty-four calls for service, thirty-four lockouts, twelve tow vehicles. They're consistent, if nothing else.
Yeah.
And thirty-two people incarcerated. And then you have the crimes that those people were lodged for by our officers for the month of August.
Any questions for Chief Schatz?
Other than that, we do have the Chili Cook-Off and Car Show coming up next month, so we'll be blocking off the roads and downtown for that.
And you did have swearing in of your new officer.
We did, yep. He's doing well. Workful staff, and hopefully we'll stay that way. It's, it's very nice for a change.
What is the car show, the food?
The car show is the nineteenth. Chili Cook-Off and Car Show is the nineteenth?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth, thank you. Saturday. It's on a Saturday. I guarantee it's on a Saturday. In October.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Good job.
You got four Saturdays there where you have to block two things off just to hit it right.
Just pick one, yep.
Anything else for the chief? Thank you, chief. Appreciate it, as usual. Okay, Stormwater Projects, Randy Williams in General Projects.
The Fourth Street Project, the storm sewers are in on Ohio. They're putting in the corner drains, and they're getting ready to start grading for the sidewalks. The LED lighting through the city, the crew's done changing out the streetlights. They're gonna go back, they'll run another reconciliation between what we pay and what lights were done to make sure that everything's been caught up, that they balanced out. Then Seventh and Madison Street parking lot, we've got to drain in. They'll be coming in first the next month, pave it. And then we're also getting close to have it striped. And then today, we, the generator was load-tested today, and now it's online for City Hall. So it'll, it'll run its own test on Monday mornings at four. It'll do a, it'll run under load for fifteen minutes.
So I shouldn't be in here using my computer at four o'clock?
Oh, it won't hurt. It'll just glitch.
Dad, I gotta back, I gotta UPS order.
Yeah.
So it won't go off.
All right. We should probably mention the Fourth Street Project. Finally, we're off Ohio Street and ready to, to take Fourth Street on. Now, we've run into some issues with Duke. Duke has to, their critical analysis report for the project showed that they would have to hold some poles and do some things of that nature as the construction was being done. Well, there are forty Duke trucks down in the Carolinas right now. So we're kind of at their mercy right now a bit as to when we can get those folks to come up and, and do that. So we're trying to work, work with them and do as much as we can without having Duke on site. Could be some stopping and starting going on. But we'll, we'll know more in the next couple of days.
Right.
Any questions for Randy? Thanks, Randy. Lots are going on. Thank you. Okay, Lenny, Street Department in the park?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Out at the Street Department, been sweeping the streets, doing some cleanup on the north side of the wastewater treatment plant, the loader. Been picking up bags of yard debris, cleaning up around the Rochester sign at the entrance to City Park on West Twelfth Street. We got all the leaf machines ready for the upcoming leaf season. Been chipping brush, trimming back various locations and alleys and around signs. We took down the Si-Iota Si banners and put up the Blacktop Cruisers, right out Chili Cook-Off ones today. Still working on placing and replacing missing and faded street signs. And that's all I have for the Street Department. Any questions on that?
I actually have one. Do you have the corner of Fifth and Fulton on your list for street signs?
The faded one?
Yeah, I believe it's Fifth and Fulton. You can't read it at all?
Yeah, it should be coming in. I ordered some.
I just noticed that the other day, and I meant to ask you.
I know you will.
And, and I'm sorry, Shaw, but you just reminded me of this for Randy. You have two spots that we need to check as to whether Duke owns the lights that were in question, right?
Oh, yeah, the two, there's one on Boulevard Street, at the intersection of Boulevard and Poets. And then there's the one beside the, yep, Pavilion on the golf course across from Faith Outreach.
Excuse us, Lenny. This light project's been interesting. There've been like three different light companies in the last fifty years. So the first issue was, what's the inventory? So, and then Duke's been finding some things they didn't realize as they went through this process. So there could be one or two lights out there that they haven't had on their inventory list that missed. So we're going through and you do this at night, find the old incandescent light that's still burning. In some instances, people have purchased their own light, so all that has to be sorted through.
And I'm kind of in my best gear there.
And there will be a separate project for lighting downtown, so that's, we're into that right now. Sorry, Lenny.
No, you're fine. Out at the park, we've been mowing grass. Weed it and cut brush along the lake by the beach and dam, and I got that on the schedule for spring. Replenished the mulch in Minnetonka Mountain where it was low in high-traffic areas. Been cleaning the restrooms and checking them before they quit. Cleaned up the Pavilion across from the B and K. Put new parking blocks on the south side of the dam. Trimmed trees and low-lined limbs at the City Park. And that's what I'll have for that.
Yeah, we should, should mention that Wes will have an ad in the paper here soon for us. We're advertising for a gardener service to garden our half a dozen or so gardens in town, plus our thirty-three pots downtown.
Someone who knows weeds from flowers.
Yeah. Want to get something regular established there that we can count on. Any questions for Lenny? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Good report. Marcus is not here this evening. Derek, would you like to come up?
Good evening.
Good evening, Derek.
For the month of August, the Water Department did the following duties. Excuse me. Read meters, did orders, repair to replace bad meters, locates, backwash the filter beds, did shut-offs, mowed multiple times, hauled in more filter for the new concrete pad at the lower shed, replumbed in a water line to go outside for our, for the new outside spigot now that our new entry door was installed. Fixed a leak on the four-inch water main at East Sixth Street and Ohio Street. This was a bell joint leaking. Removed the stone from the hole in front of the Times Theater so it could be concreted back. I do know that's finished. Repaired the outside pit at fourteen oh eight Audubon, lowered the valve box at fifteen thirty-seven Briar Lane. Cleaned out the dump truck, actually cleaned it up as well. Located and cleaned out the curb stop at fifteen thirty Jefferson Street and made sure we could get on it and operate it. LG Concrete was pouring a new driveway there. So we wanted to make sure we didn't have to do anything after they concreted it. We assisted Bill Walsh in removing some more old softener piping in the old plant, and it has been replaced with new plastic tubing. So now all our softener valves on the new side and the old side are all, they're all brand-new valves. All the old lines have been removed, and now they're all new lines with them. And I'll skip the next line since I repeated myself, but we did do that multiple times. Rewired and changed the lights on the mower trailer. And then digs that were performed, replaced the curb stop and- And then digs that were performed, replaced the curb stop in nine twenty-two Fulton Avenue that was leaking. Same thing at twelve twenty-three Franklin Street that was leaking. And then we did a ten-inch and a six-inch valve insertion at Fourth and Indiana Avenue. And then we also did two four-inch valve insertions at Fourth and Ohio Street and then Fifth and Ohio Street. The one at Fifth and Ohio was on the hydrant and the one at Fourth and Ohio was on the main. And then call-outs. Randy Williams called out on the third to the Little League Diamond for a water leak. The water was shut off for repairs and I do believe those repairs have been made and it's back on. Other than that, that's all I got.
Anything else, Derek? Should be mentioned that the Ohio Street Project, all the infrastructure is completed as we've mentioned. I wish Greg Loving were still here because the valve insertions that we've done, and we did what, four or five while we were going through this process?
Yeah, we did two, three, four, five, yeah.
Are all a process of upgrading the water main system that was over there. Will also benefit the foundry because there's now some safeguards in that would guarantee that if we had some issue, the foundry would not be affected. So that was all good stuff that came about as a process of having the ground open over there. It was an arduous process, but it's now complete. And the next step for the Ohio Street folks will be paving and sidewalk going in over there. And that should happen very quickly. That will be done before any of the other project carries on. So they'll be put back to normal very soon.
And I'll also get with E and B too, because I want to make sure that they can at least pave back on Indiana Avenue where the two valves were inserted, at least out of the way of when they come across Indiana Avenue.
Well, I want to publicly thank you for your close work with those people over there during this project.
Too close.
You kept our best interest in heart.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that, you and Randy both. Thank you.
And then do we want to give an update on the Monroe Street Project too?
Yeah, yeah.
So there was some issues on the Monroe Street Project. On some of the sidewalk and ramps weren't up to code. So amongst us in the city and working with Casey, they got those issues resolved. All the concrete is done. They passed their pre-inspections and their post-inspections. So right now, all that's scheduled is to come back and add more filter in some of the locations that Chris from HWCR Inspector found and then also put the dirt back around where they re-poured concrete. And then the project will be complete and then.
And E and B is scheduled for October the eighth
Yep.
To come in and redo that street and pave it. And that'll also be around the same time they'll do the parking lot up at Seventh Street, finish that up. Right?
That's right. That'll be it. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And Casey, thank you for your efforts over there. I know that was not a fun time either. Thank you. Okay, reports of committees. Rochester Downtown Partnership, we've heard from Harry. You don't have anything else to say?
Actually, I do.
Okay, I think we'll start with the Water Board.
Thank you.
Okay, Harry, what do you got?
Are you feeling the love here?
I am feeling the love.
I know the relation, but.
I just want to give you an update on the Design Committee met with streetfinding, streetway-finding signs. We met with a firm that does this and has done it for North Manchester and City of Logan's Port, Fort Wayne. And wayfinding signage are basically what you see in communities that are relatively large signs and they can be of various sizes, usually have some form of logo on them. And then they do things like, say, City Pool, This Way, Golf Course, Downtown, Historic Downtown. And you position them throughout your community. This isn't just a downtown thing. You position, and it can point out city parking lots, it can point out library, community school, that type of thing. And it gives a constant theme throughout the community. And it's something we've been talking about doing for a long time. And there is a grant that we can apply for. And our that could go, we could get up to $10,000. It's a five to $10,000 grant. It's called a DEG, Downtown Enhancement Grant. And it requires a match of one and a half times. So if you applied for ten, you would have to put fifteen in. So you could do a $25,000 project for $15,000. Of the local match, five thousand of that can be, fifty cents for every dollar can be in-kind. So if we get, for instance, E and B paving to put in the pedestals for the signage, for instance, because it has to meet all NDOT standards and all that kind of stuff, then that portion can be an in-kind contribution and help with our whole match process. So we just did a preliminary meeting with this gentleman and it was very, he's very qualified company. And he just presented us with a proposal. And I just wanted to share this information. I'm not asking at this point, but I'm just trying to decide if this is something you want us to keep moving forward on. And if so, you know, this $5,680, this $5,680 is his. He described a wayfinding signage project as a four-phase process. And this is for the first two phases of it. For, you know, first phase is develop what, where you want them, what you want, you know, what are you trying to identify and where you want the signage to be and what do you want it to look like? And that's kind of what this would do, would be, and then the second two phases is building the signs and installation of those signs.
Well, I just read what the $5,600 is about. You don't get a sign for that.
No, you get what it looks like.
That's a pretty good gig.
Yeah.
Come in and, yeah, tell us where we're gonna put our signs and what they're gonna look like.
Any clue what the total project would be?
We were shooting a number, you know, the City of Logan's Port did like $150,000 in signage, but it's a much bigger town. Probably somewhere between $25,000 and $50,000 if we, there again, once we decide, each one of these signs is about four or five grand. They're not cheap. They have to have like four-foot of concrete base and has to have a break-off pedestal so if a car hits it, it snaps it off.
I bet you could make us a sign a lot cheaper, Dwight.
And that is certainly a possibility. Yeah, but, but, yeah, this, we're just trying to go down the process right now and figure out where, what we want to do. And, you know, if this is something you want to pursue, if you wanted us to bring this gentleman in and make a presentation, if you wanted us to talk to others and get another estimate, just kind of wanting some guidance. Or if he just wants to x-nay it. But I was hoping that maybe, maybe that this project could be something that could be pulled from seed it in some future year or, you know, some other funding source.
Personally, I think wayfinding signage looks nice. Like it helps make it downtown especially. I know it's for everywhere else, but makes it downtown feel like it downtown. And when you go through those other cities that have it, they stand out to me because it's something that we don't have.
Virtually every city around us has, yeah.
Logan's Port is very nice.
Yeah.
Very nice.
It should be. These guys did it. So that's an example of their work. I mean, this is, the whole city of Fort Wayne is done by these people.
I mean, that's for real.
And they're based out of Fort Wayne.
None of us need the signage. We know where everything is. But as we try to draw more people downtown with beautifying it, enhancing it, you know, bike trail coming in. If we have people coming in from different towns on bikes, it would be nice to show them where other stuff is.
Yeah, where the school is.
Softball parks, the school, hospital.
The pool.
Yeah, the pool.
Trying to find that pool.
Golf course, yeah.
Trying to find our pool, if you're not from here.
Yeah.
Well, softball parks. Because I'm in Atlanta, it's easy to find.
Exactly. And they have big signs and they have little signs. Like if you're doing the pool and you're wanting to get just one, I'm sorry, one thing, you can just do a little version of it that just says pool, but it still has the same common theme, less money. That's not the $5,000 sign, but that's probably the $2,000 sign.
Also, what I was gonna say is, the only recommendation I would have, because you were asking as far as getting additional quotes or proposals or thoughts on cost, if the city is going to contribute financially in any fashion, State Board of the Council will require that, especially at that price point. So I would say if you can locate other companies, if the council wishes for you to move forward, I would definitely make sure that you.
For the design phase or for the whole thing?
Everything.
I guess.
Yeah, the whole project. No different than a truck.
Right, but do we need a competitive quote on the design phase?
In looking at that number, yes.
That's out for everything.
And if Logan's Port didn't do that, I'd be real surprised.
Have to.
And a minimum of three is what they prefer. So, but if there's not three companies of the same caliber and you can only locate two, then it just needs to be documented.
We got a question. Who regulates what goes on there?
We just, we would make that decision. The city would decide where we wanted to put the signs. You know, we're gonna like identify the ten most affordable spots, you know. And it could be a phased thing. You could do five signs and then a year later, do five more.
Well, my question, my next question was gonna be if a business wants on there.
I would not be, this would not be for commercial use. This would be, yeah, basically. Yeah, this would be for public amenities.
Parks, the pool, the golf course.
Library.
Library.
Softball, baseball.
Yeah.
Mason was saying that everybody knows where everything is, but I'm relatively new. When I first came here, not that hard to find things, but where is the high school? Where is the baseball field? Where is the football field? So if someone coming into town, not knowing anything, will be able to see whatever.
Well, and it's an advertisement for your community because it's letting them know, oh, I didn't know they had a pool. You know, or I didn't know they.
I see she's left and Casey would have to be involved in all of this too.
Yeah, and NDOT.
NDOT.
Yeah. And these guys are, you know, that's what they do.
Would they come in and make a proposal or give a presentation?
Yeah, maybe we ought to get a couple more estimates and then we'd, then they could come in and.
Have folks come in and show us pictures. Does that sound like a win or not?
Oh, definitely. I want to see what they're doing first.
So is that a consensus to move forward for Harry?
Yes, absolutely.
I just, yeah, I don't want to spend a lot of time developing it if it's not something that you guys want us to do. So, I mean, this is evidently, you know, mostly, we could raise some money for this, but most of these dollars are gonna come from the city. I mean, it's basically city amenities, so.
I think everybody in agreement that we, probably the next thing would be to have somebody come and show us, you know, what they're talking about. Maybe, are there three people? Are there two other people you can contact?
I don't know. I think we just basically called Manchester and asked them where their signs came from. They gave us these people and we contacted these folks out of Fort Wayne. So they might be able to tell us if there's some other competitors.
You can ask about the grant situation too.
The grant, you know, the grant is, you know, subject to OKRA, but the DEG grant, Steve Murray just texted me, it's only five to $10,000. And you have to do, for every dollar of grant money, you have to spend a dollar and a half. So if you get $10,000, you have to spend 15. Five of that can be in-kind. So.
Okay.
So it's gonna pay roughly half.
Half, yeah.
And RDP can be the.
I was just gonna say.
You know, being 501(c)(3), people can donate money and, or whatever. You know, we might be able to get some foundation dollars or, there's options out there for it, but.
RDP might not be because it goes beyond the scope of the.
Downtown.
Or you're going to get coming in from inches in town.
Yeah, we talked about that. It is outside our scope, being the whole town, but it points basically to town. So signage is something we can help with. And it is part of the whole consistent theme that RDP's running anyway, so. That's just, you know, what I look at this is what's gonna follow MSRP. So if we just get the downtown done, then, but it takes so long to get these things rolling. We're talking a year or two before it's gonna happen, so.
And if we know, if we can work it with into our budget cycle, for instance, if we know by May or June that come 2020, this is something that we want to make sure we include. So when the council starts reviewing budgets, I start sending those out in May, gathering them back by June, and then we meet in July to review everything. So optimally, would be great to have anything that might want to be spent out in 2020 included in that discussion ahead of time versus doing an additional appropriation. Just a suggestion.
Yeah, it's something for you guys to ponder, so. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Harry. Okay, Karen, area plan and commission?
Yes, we met last evening at 7:00 PM.
Wow.
We met and discussed the fee schedule. We have some, I guess, some tweaks that kind of need to be made in a few areas of our fee schedules. And the main discussion was on our, on the solar abras that are being brought within the county and also the CAFO schedules for, that impact the inspection of, I guess Fulton County has mostly pits for retention of waste.
Retention ponds?
Yes, retention.
For drainage?
Yes, CAFO, yes. And so we discussed that and so there's going to be some more looking into that. And Casey's going to work on that. We're going to bring it up at the next meeting then on what we've decided on to schedule the fees for those or of changing them. Also, on pertaining to industrial and commercial sites, the landscaping fees and items that are required for the surrounding of the buildings on industrial and commercial sites. We will be working on that one also. It was just discussion last evening and the meeting was closed. End of the call.
Very good. You make a note that your next meeting, if the subject is still retention ponds, it has become apparent that there's no ordinance, city, county, Drainage Board, anything regarding maintenance of retention ponds.
That was discussed last evening also.
Very good. Then it's hit that.
Yes, we are, yes, that's in the discussion
Okay.
within the codes, so, yes.
Doesn't be any good to have a retention pond if it's all grown up with.
Yes.
Yeah, stuff, okay. Great, any other questions for Karen? Okay, thank you. Man, that was a great report. We never hear you.
Thank goodness, because I didn't know a lot about those retention ponds.
FEDCO.
Okay, FEDCO did meet on the sixth, reported a checking account balance of $1,916,18, operating reserve $72,590,96. So we have open board seats to fill. There's a ballot being prepared, but we do have four members that are either in their ninth or 10th year. Terry was gonna reach out and see if they wanted to continue on the board. And then we'll be, then we'll have our vote. The business incubator is still in the process. Chris is still working to close a deal on 501 Main Street. Tiffa Newbrews approached, inquiring about USDA loan funds. We're waiting on their application. Frank Bowley is still, Frank Bowley, he's, too much going on in Peoria. So he might possibly be joining forces with someone globally to be a project manager for him. We received more site requests. Another Pulaski County business is looking for a 20,000 to 25,000 square foot facility. The company out of North Carolina, Taylor Chemical, is interested in Dean Foods. We've not heard anything else from them, but they were told that the building wasn't for sale, so I guess they're most likely looking elsewhere. Terry received a call from Todd Kito looking for some space, so he's looking at a couple buildings in the area. We were awarded a new USDA grant in July, it closed in August. The Cook Building and the Chicken Coop both sold the week prior to our meeting. Elliot Hazen bought the old Cook Building and the Chicken Coop Building sold to Mitt Jenkins. There will be a career fair held October 3rd at the Fairgrounds. The RDP Economic Vitality Committee is working on a business retention and expansion plan for downtown. Schnabelteer has begun their, they're now brewing beer. They do not have a release date yet. And then finally, I got a text from Terry. He spoke with Mike Kuiper from Nickel Plate, who is, he spoke to the governor today and the governor wants us to build a, a lot more trails, including between Rochester and Monterey. On the old abandoned railroad line, says money will not be a problem. Anything or questions? That's my report.
Oh, so he's found the windfall, but-
It is just a text, so.
Okay, okay.
That doesn't match the email that I read today, but we'll see.
When'd you get the email?
Uh, this afternoon.
I just got the text before the meeting.
Go with the trail before finishing 31. Oh, I have governor, go for another bullet.
It's all on your perspective, John.
It's all on your perspective.
Park Board, Mason.
All right, we met on the 10th and other than what Leonard reported, we didn't really have much. The pool filters that Lori ordered, she had sent off the filters to the company that were going to custom make them because they're so old. She got them in and they don't fit, so she's sending those back and we're back to square one on that. And the golf course, our airifier has been out of commission, something we do twice a year. Wild is looking at purchasing new, contracting it out, you know, whatever. He ended up finding a used one. It was actually a good match for us and so we're back in business and he got those airified probably this week.
Any questions for Mason? Well, I'd like to mention for the record that our associate park board member, Grace Dakey, was homecoming queen this past Friday. Congratulations to Gracie. Here, here? Okay, the BZA and Council on Aging, Marty is not here. Solid Waste Animal Adoption Center, Chase is not here. Tree Board and EMS, Councilman Fitzwater.
Tree Board did meet September 6th. The main topics were that there, the contracts are also the current, the cutting and the trimming of trees. And so that process is going on as far as we know. The company with the contract is going to get into it. We're looking at replacing, trees are coming down, pending the budget, so maybe Tocqueville shot up at some point to see what's, what's available after the bills come in for the removals. Or for the, keep tree city status, we have to replace, not just cut things down. And I just, so that was our September 6th meeting. We're supposed to have met on the 20th to talk more about the, you know, additional trees coming down and planting, but I believe one member was out of town on vacation, another one may have gotten called to, down to North Carolina for the hurricane relief, so, yeah.
No meeting?
He couldn't be there. So two, two out of four in that quorum. And I did want to follow up on something else I just received, an email earlier this week or last week, from a resident wanting to know if a tree, one of his trees was coming down. Yeah, it's marked, but nothing's happening. So I forwarded to Ms. Edgar. She got right back with them and he said, you know, thanks to the board for getting so back, back with them so promptly. He said, I just mainly want to know why I need to move my cars out of the way. But he wasn't so much upset that it wasn't down, he just wanted to make sure that-
That it's clear.
Well, his, his cars weren't there, so that's good to do the work.
Sure.
So that's why I passed that feedback out. Always good to hear something good rather than it fell on my car or something.
Hey, Brian?
Yes, sir.
Hey, can you, on 1304, between 1304 and 1308, I think it was Madison, there's, there's one that's bad. I mean, it's split down the middle and it's, it's all hollowed out the bottom. I think I talked to, oh, I can't think of the owner of the plant.
Jim?
Jim Mulligan. And he went down and he, he verified it. Yeah, he just come down and, I had, I had a property owner, I think it was a 1308, called me today, concerned about it. And Rainey has another one, a guy on Ohio, lives at Fifth and Ohio, who's got one, it's dead and it keeps losing its limbs. That's also probably a, one that's in jeopardy of falling.
Okay, all right, I'll let him know.
All right, thank you, sir.
And that's all I have for Tree Board.
Okay, EMS.
No meeting yet, I'm not sure what's going on.
Okay. Any questions for Councilman Fitzwater? I should note that part of our mayor's walk, if you've been keeping track of, of our walks, it's very apparent that we need a lot of sidewalk work in our city. And very soon now, we'll be bringing an ordinance forward to reestablish, put some monies aside to reestablish our CUM fund for a sidewalk program, a matching program of some sort. Still working the numbers on that, but we've got to get started with something like that. Doing lots of things to beautify Rochester, but we can't forget about off the main drag. Our sidewalks are in terrible shape. And a lot of bricks still out there serving as sidewalks. Not telling you anything, am I, Councilman Garrett?
No. I've walked them all.
So be prepared, we'll, we'll be looking at that very soon.
And there are some areas that have no sidewalks at all.
Yes, yes, it's, yeah. It's time to get into the 21st century. Right?
Yes.
You want to get in the 21st century? Climb on, here we go.
We're going hard ride.
Time to work on those things. Yep. Okay, John, Water Board.
Yes, Water Board met and Derek gave quotes on the replacement of a skid loader for the 2019 budget and they tabled that for the, for the discussion for the October meeting. And they also had a quote from Ford Lincoln Mercury for a, to replace the 2013 pickup truck with a new utility truck at a price of $20,561. They are going to accept Ford's quote because we did not receive any other quotes from the other two car, vehicle companies in town or anyone else. So that was one we had and it was a very respectable price, so we went with it. Marvin made the motion to approve the 60 cent raise for hourly employees and superintendent's wage of 54 to 90. And Derek came up with a thing that was pretty cool and as you were there, Mr. Mayor, so you know it too, and he did a very good job on it. He's coming up with a 20-year schedule, a forecast maintenance project improvement for the city of Rochester. And it's the first time anybody's done that and it is going to work good. Everybody was pretty impressed and it, it's just going to be a good thing for the city and the water department knowing what to look forward to and what could go wrong. And it was very nice and he, he came up with this and I think it was appreciated by everybody. And then the painting project, the water plant is completed, except for a few touch-ups. And it was really about everything that Derek had on the, on the agenda for that, for that meeting. There was nobody taking a vacation this month.
No, no, no.
We were all kind of wondering about that, but other than that, everything, other than that, everything was normal.
Well, you know, and it was-
You thought you were going to get away without hearing it, didn't you?
It was amazing, John, didn't you think? It was amazing that all that got done and there was no vacation taken.
And no vacation taken. Yeah, I couldn't hardly understand it, but-
Really gets a lot done. Now, that, that forecast of-
20-year program.
20-year plan, it's, it not only includes his departmental concerns and, and issues to, to look at, but it also includes, like Monroe Street project, our infrastructure situations. And he, you know, there are others out there that we need to get on some kind of schedule that we're looking at in moving forward to take care of before it hits us hard with some failure. So, and the Monroe Street's a perfect example, handled that very well. But he's putting that all together also. So no, it was a good meeting.
Yes, very good meeting.
Any questions for Councilman Garrett? Okay, thank you. ADA concerns, we have none.
Actually, Ted, actually, um-
You do?
Yes.
Concerns not on here?
Well, not a concern, but it just came up today. Just to let everybody know that there, we will be replacing the corners at the intersection of 8th and Main Street on the north side. So the curb ramps, the intact, both of those approaches, if you walk down that area, you'll see we, there's a lot of cracks.
Lot of spider work going on.
Right.
Yeah.
So, wanted to bring in Michigan contractors to double check the street, the traffic sign or traffic signal post. Get that out.
Foundation.
Foundations to make sure they were okay and he felt like they were perfectly fine. It's just that the way that those were poured was a little different than the ones to the north. So that area was spidering worse. So we're getting, getting those started here pretty soon and should be done before the chili cook-off, correct?
That's our plan.
Yeah, so, and then also-
Weather permitting.
I'm sorry?
Weather permitting.
Weather permitting. So that, so we will be getting those, at least get a start on those two corners and then again, working it into the budget to make sure that we can continue on with some of those other intersections and corners. The other area is going to be the corner of 7th and Madison. We've got some sidewalk, sidewalk work that's going to be going on there for ADA compliance. So some of this stuff has been on our ADA transition plan. Some of you will remember from 2012, there are areas that have been marked, so we're just going to keep trucking along, look, shipping it away a little bit at a time and getting our ADA complacency ongoing.
Yeah, it was, it was kind of humorous. I had a call from a lady who was concerned with our ADA ramps over on Monroe Street. Why in the world do they have to be so rampy, so much of an angle? And there is these older folks that we have trouble walking down. I said, we don't control that. That's federal and has to be a certain degree in angle. That's all part of it.
I say, well, it depends on where it's at on Monroe, because if it's an older section, it probably wouldn't meet current code.
No, she was talking about the new pores.
The new pore.
Yeah, yeah.
It has, yeah, it's a-
Okay, yeah.
Slope is 8.1, grades 2%. I mean, yeah, there's federal codes there we have to follow.
Okay, anything else ADA or that covers it?
Unless anybody has received any concerns.
Anything from our legal department?
I don't think we have anything that we haven't already discussed.
You ought to bring a book to read or something.
I actually sit here and do more works for you while you're doing-
Oh, thank you. Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Without any other, without any other issues, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So I make motions made by Goodman, seconded by Heidi, those in favor, signed by, and okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.